It's 3:30, so I'm going to call to order the diversion board authority special meeting for Thursday, February 11th, 2021, 3:30 PM. Could I get, let's see, call to order?
Roll call.
Yeah, can I do a roll call, please?
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney. Mayor Dartis.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
I'm here.
Mr. Hendrickson. Mr. Pepcorn. Mr. Ebinger.
Here.
Mr. Strand. John, are you able to connect? Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Shirling.
Here.
Mr. Steen.
Here.
Dr. Mahoney. Mr. Pepcorn.
Here.
Aquarum is present.
I'm here too.
Mayor Mahoney's here too.
Yep, I have you down, thank you, Dr. Mahoney. Thank you, Chuck.
Yep.
And did you, in the chat, John Strand said he's here, we'll call in due to audio issues? Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would request that we remove item number 4A, bullet point number 2, from the agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of 4A 2?
Steen.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can I please get a repeat on the second?
Steen.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Dartis.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrickson.
Yes.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Yes.
Mr. Ebinger.
Yes.
Mr. Strand.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Shirling. Mrs. Shirling. Mr. Steen.
Yes.
That is everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, number three is a general counsel update, and I will turn that over to John Shockley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to your first meeting as chair. Today I have for the board is a resolution amending the contracting procedure for the diversion authority regarding the authorization and procedures by the executive director and the board. Back in 2016, when the diversion authority was formed, we had this resolution that provided for these approvals, and at that time it had given the executive director contracting ability up to $150,000, which at the time was the threshold for bidding requirements in North Dakota. And after the project received a temporary injunction that was issued by the federal court, the diversion authority then, the board then reduced that amount to $10,000 due to the project largely not being as active at the time, and at that time the board had indicated that when the project got rolling again, that they would, the board wanted to reconsider to reinstate that amount. We brought this before the finance committee, we tabled it for one meeting, so that Commissioner Steen had a few questions and some cleanups that he'd caught on the resolution, we made those, and then it went to finance committee yesterday, and a recommendation was made to approve it. The contracting authority for the executive director is now up to $200,000, as during, as between 2016 and 2020, the North Dakota legislature increased the bidding threshold from 150 to $200,000. The diversion authority has quite an extensive procedure for approval of contracts, and this resolution sets forth those procedures. The most significant change is just increasing the executive director's contracting authority up to $200,000. The executive director still has to report back to the diversion authority, it's just it was increasing that contracting amount. I can certainly answer any questions that you may have regarding the resolution.
Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, do, could I get a motion for this resolution? Do I have a second?
Ebinger.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Dartis.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrickson.
Yes.
Mr. Ebinger.
Yes.
Mr. Strand.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Shirling.
Yes.
Mr. Steen. Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. That is everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number four on the agenda, finance update, I will turn that over to the chair of the finance committee, Commissioner Dartis, Mayor Dartis.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yesterday, the finance committee met in a special meeting, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the finance committee for having some regular special meetings with all that we have going on, they've been very generous with their time. Yesterday, when the finance committee met, we had, the executive director had approved contract actions, we had five items of which we reviewed, there were no contract actions with regard to Clay County Joint Water Resource District or the MCC JPA. Also, we did hear from, as stated earlier by Mr. Shockley, the diversion authority contracting resolution, which passed. Going, we had a considerable amount of discussion with regarding to contract actions that you see here in front of you, of which item number two has been removed, 4A number two. There was a lot of discussion, we did take action on items number three and four, they were passed. Item one was not, there was a lot of discussion and kind of a lack of information at the time of the meeting. Since that time, Commissioner Steen and myself, Mr. Paulson, and Ms. Darling have had conversation with regard to the PR for Good New Service Agreement, which is 4A item one. We've had extended conversations about the additional information and the process, as well as the intent of what Mr. Paulson was suggesting. So at this time, I would recommend, Madam Chairman, that Mr. Paulson have an opportunity to talk about that meeting that we had and some of those considerations. Again, it's for PR for good for the 237,000, and that was the discussion item.
Madam Chair, John Strand, could I join in briefly?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, Mayor Dartis, for that information, I think that in light of what all has unfolded and, and the questions many of us had, the need for information, I'm presenting a motion to simplify our actions. My motion is as follows, I move to send this item back to public outreach, to clarify the recommendations, including issuing local RFPs, to budget the communication plan's needs, and to then send that budget request to finance for approval before coming to the full diversion authority for consideration.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, is there a second for this motion?
Second, Mahoney.
Okay, seconded by Mayor Mahoney, any other discussion? Other discussion, questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, could I have a roll call on this motion, please?
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Dartis.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrickson.
Yes.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Yes.
Mr. Ebinger.
Yes.
Mr. Strand.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Shirling.
Yes.
Mr. Steen.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
That is everyone.
Madam Chairman, this is Dartis again.
Yes, Mayor Dartis.
I would move the approval of the finance update, with the exception of the item of which Commissioner Strand sent back, so I'd move through approval of the finance committee report.
Steen, second.
Okay, any discussion? I didn't know if you would want to take these separately, or if you, obviously the motion is to take them both, but any discussion?
This is Roger, I have a question.
Yes, Roger, go ahead.
So what's going to be included for our vote is, what, what line items are we going to vote on?
Madam Chair, I can clarify for Commissioner Olson, so the motion was for the approval of HMG Task Order 26 Amendment 8, and that is related to hydraulic bottling for the Southern Embankment, related to the corps' design work. The fourth item there would be Task Order 6 Amendment 6, P3 procurement support, and that is Jacob's budget for 2021, and I'd like to just make a note to clarify, if I scroll down to the contract, or executive director approved contracting actions, what we've done is we have unencumbered the 2020 unspent dollars for P3 support, and that is 1.754 million, and of those dollars, we're moving 1.2 million into the 2021 cash budget. You can also see there's some additional unencumbered amounts from 2020 as well, and those were approved by the executive director under the JPA executive director authorities. So I hope that clarifies, I'm open for any additional questions before there's a vote.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, so I believe the motion is to approve 4A 3 and 4, since we had a separate motion on 4A 1 and 4A 2 was removed, so there is a motion on the table and a second, any additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, could I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Dartis.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrickson. Mr. Pepcorn.
Yes.
Mr. Ebinger.
Yes.
Mr. Strand.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Shirling.
Yes.
Mr. Steen.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes, yes.
That is everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to number five on our agenda, under other business, I'd like to turn it over to Greg Tavene from Grand Farm for a presentation. Mr. Tavene, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone, Greg Tavene here, I'm just pulling up the slide quickly, I am here today to share about Emerging Prairies Project, the Grand Farm. Today, I'm joined by my colleagues and board members, Tia Spellhog from Microsoft, who's a board member, and Jay Schuler, another board member of the Grand Farm. Grand Farm is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit subsidiary of Emerging Prairie, another 501(c)(3) in the community. Grand Farm came from a conversation, the idea of Grand Farm came from a conversation where Barry Bachelor, an experienced agriculture technology in our, in our market, asked, what's the region's major? A group of folks came together to think about the opportunity to advance technology in agriculture, to continue to diversify our economy and build on the momentum of our community. It was established with an idea to focus on agriculture technology, to support growers by creating more efficient operations, and to be, to continue to build the momentum of our region as a globally recognized leader in agriculture technology. The project kicked off with Brad Smith of Microsoft committing a significant amount of funding to the project, and since we launched in 2019, we've got a growing amount of partners, some of those organizations that are currently actively involved, North Dakota State University, CHS, North Dakota's Department of Transportation, Microsoft, the Northern Plains Test Site, Bobcat, RDO, the list goes on and on, we've had a tremendous amount of momentum. The Grand Farm was created to focus on research, development, and opportunity for the region. We know, as a society, we have to feed a growing population by 2050, we know there continues to be challenges with labor as it relates to agriculture opportunities and production. There's a significant lack of venture capital in the marketplace for, for technology companies. We have a workforce skills gap where folks not, don't necessarily have all the technology skills they need for the future, as well as agriculture production, and I think near and dear to my heart is agriculture safety. Having lost friends and family that have been impacted by farm accidents, we know that that's a challenge. And so with the Grand Farm, with the research, development, and opportunity that technology can combine, we can, we believe we can address these problems and build momentum. With Grand Farm, we believe there's an ability to make a significant impact as we attract businesses to the market, attract talent to the region, and attract capital. Since Grand Farm was started, Trilogy Networks out of Colorado has created a significant presence in our marketplace, Plug and Play has, now has an agriculture technology vertical in North Dakota. This company is based out of Silicon Valley and is considered the largest innovation platform in the world, and we've engaged SpaceX to consider deploying their Starlink internet connectivity into the environment. We believe Grand Farm will continue to attract companies, will continue to advance technology that can make a difference. We have six companies that would like to be part of the Grand Farm, but we have a challenge. We currently have 45 acres of land that we can use for research and development purposes, however, we would like the ability to increase our utilization of our land. So last March, Mayor Mahoney approached me and said, Greg, the Grand Farm with only 45 acres doesn't seem very grand, and he began a conversation with us to explore what it might look like, to partner with the Fargo-Moorhead Diversion Authority with land that we potentially might use for the project. So I've had a conversation with several of you, we, we are aware of some of the challenges that are going, as you're building policies and creating opportunities, yet we're here today to say, would the diversion authority consider allowing us to rent land at market rates, negotiating with pipers, on any one-year opportunities of unfilled land? The Grand Farm has continued to build momentum through engagement with Senator Hoven, Governor Burgum, the FCC chairman, the former Secretary of Agriculture, Sonny Perdue, we've been able to work with collaborative efforts to engage Kratos Energy Defense Services with American Crystal Sugar on autonomous vehicles for moving the sugar beet piles from, from one spot to another, and we've got momentum, we've got global interest, we've had a tremendous amount of headlines, but right now we're looking to increase our acreage. So with that, we give thanks to the diversion authority, several of you have been at this project for a long time, so thanks for protecting our community, and a big, big congratulations on your milestone this week.
Any questions from committee members?
Madam Chair, this is Dave Pepcorn.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess my question is, what's the next step? How can we move this forward?
Mr. Tavene, I keep, I want to make sure that I'm saying your name right, Mr. Tavene, I don't know if that's a question for you, or Joel, if that's a question for you?
Well, I would, Madam Chairman, I would welcome the opportunity to respond, we've been exploring this path since last March, we're, we're at really a position where we need a yes or a no, we've had several conversations, and, and we are looking for a definitive answer, is there a path forward to rent market rate land for a one-year contract that is unutilized currently, and if there is, we'd like to proceed on negotiations through, I think, Piper, Pipers is the, is the organization, and in the event that there's a no, that would just help us, because we've been very optimistic, we've been grateful for the leadership of Mayor Mahoney and Joel Paulson, sharing the opportunity, we, we're just in a spot that we have six companies that want to be part of this if we have additional acreage, and if we can work with the diversion authority, we would like that, in the event that it's not available to us, it would be nice to know, because we're, we need to get into the production of the project.
Madam Chair.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yep, Mayor Mahoney, I'm going to have you wait for just a moment, because if you have a question, there are three people that do have their hands raised, so was it in response to Mr. Tavene, or was it a question?
Well, go ahead, I'll call the three, I'll, I'll come on later.
Okay, I believe Mr. Olson had his hand raised first, then it was Mr. Peterson and then Mr. Strand.
Yeah, this is Roger Olson, Greg, I talked to you here a couple months ago about your project, and I guess my question is, why aren't you out purchasing land to make sure that you, you have land in hand? If you could answer that question?
Sure, Madam Chairman, I'm new to this as well, is it best for you to call, or do I have to, am I able to respond?
No, feel free to respond.
Okay, Mr. Olson, well, the reality is, this is an early-stage project, and we, the reason we aren't purchasing land is we don't have the money to purchase land, we have not proven the model, our price point for our partners at a premium level is $10,000 to be part of the project, and so the short answer is, we do not currently have the capital to be able to make that type of commitment, and we want to be good stewards of our resources, and we, we do not have the money, and so, over time, if we had that position, we would certainly look for that opportunity, but currently do not have the capital to make that commitment.
Mayor Carlson, I have another question too, and a, and a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, in order for us to, to give you an opportunity to rent some land from us, that means we need to take that opportunity away from a farmer. Right now, I don't know of any land that we own, isn't being farmed, or want to be farmed, now that doesn't mean that we, a piece of ground won't come up, but that's the issue. I'm a farmer, and these guys have sacrificed, given up land, sold land, and I personally look as, look at this as their mitigation to be able to rent this back, this land back until, until we need it, so that's an obstacle that we have to get over if we're going to rent or offer land to the Grand Farm. And another, another option I'd like you to consider is, if you have a piece of ground that you're really interested in, and I think you do, and, and I, I know that it's leased out to someone else, why don't you go approach them and see if you couldn't sublease that from them? It might cost you a little more, but then, the farmer having to give up the land is making that choice himself, and I would feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Chairman, Mr. Olson, there is a piece of land that we're thinking about, is in the Wild Rice Inlet area, it's available only for one year, and I don't think there's a lot of conflicts on that particular piece of land, so the intent for today's meeting is the possibility of allowing Grand Farm to rent that farm with Piper, go through the usual things we always do, Piper also tends to rent that land out, that will not be rentable after that, and then Grand Farm can do exactly what you do, they can work with the other landowners in the area and see if they can find land somewhere in that area that they can lease, but they would like to have something that it can do this year, and I think Joel will verify, but I think this particular land would be available, and I think what Greg is trying to do is get something that it can have for this year, the rest of the negotiations would go through land committee, or go through our usual Piper, and do the things you said, is that the owner that owns it gets to be where he is, maybe just lands that somebody is available that would allow him to be that relationship on a lease or a buy.
Sure, and that was, that was land that wasn't farmed last year, is that right? I think I know where that's at.
Yeah, I'll have Joel comment on that.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we do have a parcel of land that was scheduled to be part of the construction of the Wild Rice Control Structure, the contractor has since changed their proposed construction operations, and it does not appear that that land would be necessary for construction until the summer of 2022. So last year, it was not farmed, we do not have any leases in place on that land at the moment, and, and so it is open land for the time being.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and Mr. Paulson for that, Mr. Olson, are, do you have any additional, or can I move on to Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Carlson, you can move on, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, broadly speaking, those of you that know me pretty well know that I'm a big autonomous guy, I don't need, or Mr. Tavene doesn't need me to sell this, I think it's, it's going to be the future regardless, I think, broadly speaking, again though, I think that what this reinforces is the need for a policy, I'm for teaming with anyone, not just Grand Farm, if we have other business owners, other nonprofits, that have the ability to benefit and create a better world for all of us, be it through drone technology, be it through, I don't know what, I think we need to support them, much as we would, whether we're city commissioners, county commissioners, what have you, but I think this reinforces the need to get a land policy, so everyone is treated equally, so whether it's Mr. Tavene's team, which again, I support, or some other person that we don't even know about yet, that may have similar thoughts, similar ideas, a similar concept, we need to treat them as fairly as we're going to be treating anyone, so I know we're working on that, I think the issue may be, and Mr. Tavene, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the issue here is that there's a matter of haste, or Mayor Mahoney too, I think you've got a lot more information on this than I do, but if there's a matter of haste, that may be a pickle for this year, but, long story short, I, I think we need a policy, and, if, this is a great project, but we need a policy to reinforce what we do in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Mayor Dartis, you had your hand up, and then after you, Tia Spellhog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Peterson just shared my thoughts exactly, is the fact that we're in the development stage of the land policy, and I want to be as respectful as possible to the Grand Farm, it's a great program, but until that land's policy is finalized, I am very uncomfortable with, with this request today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dartis, Ms., yeah, Ms. Spellhog?
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're pronouncing it correctly, thank you very much, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to address Roger's concern, and hello, Roger, so I'm a, I'm a Kindred Farm girl, grew up just outside of Kindred, and, you know, being on the board, this was, you know, a concern. And, you know, being on the board, this was, you know, a concern that we wanted to make sure that we are not displacing farmers. We, we know that our voice with the Grand Farm is meant to support the farmers. And so we wanted to work with them. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the, the current landowners or the leasers. And that was definitely an option that was brought up to work with a, a current lease to see if we can help support them. So I just wanted to bring that up really quickly that, you know, I think that was a really good point to, to bring up. And, and that's something that we definitely take into consideration. So thank you. And thank you so much, Mr. Peterson and Mayor Dardis for your support.
Thank you, Miss Spelhog, for your comments. I am not sure if Commissioner Campbell or Commissioner Sherrling went first. So first, so I'm going to just say Commissioner Sherrling because you're on my list first.
Well, thank you, actually, I think it was Commissioner Campbell. But I, I will just quickly address, address the fact that the, as Chair of Land Committee, we are working diligently on, on this, this policy. And we don't have it finalized yet. I think we're, we're getting there, but there's a lot to consider. And it, it might seem pretty, pretty straightforward on the outside. But we do have a commitment, as Roger mentioned earlier, to those farmers that we have, we have displaced. And, and really, we, we need to give this our full thorough consideration. And, and that's what we've been doing and will continue to do. Hopefully, we'll be able to give you a recommendation to that policy, you know, in, in the very near future. But we don't have that done today. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherrling. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to concur and thank Roger for his comments. I, I think that what we've been doing in land management, as Commissioner Sherrling just talked about, was I think our goal is to put whatever ag land we have available back into the hands of those producers to deal with the best they can. We, we just think that's the best approach. I, I do think that, that this request probably comes too early in terms of what our final policy is, as, as Mayor, or, or Mr. Sherrling said. And I just believe we should, should hold off on, on any such request today. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mahoney?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Mayor Mahoney?
I agree with all the comments made. This particular land, Pifer, has been doing a lot of our leasing throughout the project and following policy. That's what they have done. They're not asking for below-rate markets, they're asking to work with Pifer to come to negotiate a lease. It's only for one year. There's no farmer that's going to farm this after this, can be part of the project. So this is the one area, it's actually Ames Construction owns it. It's not a farmer that owns it, so Ames Construction owns it. And this allows Greg, Tavene and his team to work up other providers and people to invest in land like Roger asked them to. And perhaps next year, they can either try to sublease from somebody or work with somebody else. I think in this particular case, we, we break no violations of the present policy on excess land that we're trying to do. Pifer does our leasing for lands that are valuable to lease. They do it at market rate. And this is just asking for consideration for the Grand Farm to negotiate with the Pifer to pay market rates. There's no other farmer that's coming in here after, there's nobody else that can own this land. It's going to be part of the project. They have one year. The second year, what they need to do is work with our team, land management and the team, and do all, whatever rules come out of there, that's the rules that the land, the, the Grand Farm's going to have to work with. And they will break no, violate no policy actions. So I would say this is the one thing is they work out the lease with Pifer and they have that one piece of land for one year. And hopefully, they can work out something else somewhere in the project areas to have more permanent land.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor Mahoney. Commissioner Peterson and then Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tavene, what is your drop dead date on this? Or you're, one of your team, do you have a date where if we wait two weeks for our next meeting, is that catastrophic? Or what, what's, what's your timeline, sir?
I would just say that we are pursuing other options in haste. And it might be your timeline is less, if, if that makes sense. I mean, we, we, our patience is running out. We are losing opportunities. A multi, multinational company out of Canada that has a presence in North Dakota is now pursuing other places. They requested a 10-year lease. They want to put capital in, they want to bring their customers from around the, the region too far to this site to do the work. And so we are with full commitment, looking at other options. We have a meeting at Monday at 1:30 with another option and it may leave our marketplace. And so our patience has run out on the diversion process. We began the process in March, we met formally with Joel and I think it was August 19th. And we, you know, we've been mindful of the policy and we just advocated today to get on the, the agenda, to get a yes or a no. And even if you vote no today, that, that's fine, we'll move on. But, you know, we really like to get an answer today because we, we just were using a tremendous amount of time and we're missing opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
And it's that the project will continue, it just may have to find another location. And the sadness for me on that, Mr. Peterson, is that we see a tremendous amount of synergy co-locating with the diversion as it relates to the technology strategy to reduce costs of the project. Whether it's autonomous mowing, whether it's bringing Vantus from the Northern Plains Test Site onto the location to have UAS services for surveillance. We just see the tremendous amount of potential to collaborate with the project, to bring technology that reduces costs, that increases productivity. And by the way, the producer has an opportunity to see new technology to increase yield and outcome. And that just excites me.
Mr. Tavene, to that point, you know, I'm a big fan of the Grand Farm and you and I have talked multiple times about this. And I do think there's a great deal of logic, having your project adjacent to diversion. It's no more complex than we know for, I mean, in perpetuity, that land will be farmland. What better, what better shot to develop technology in a safe area, meaning behind the diversion, and then develop ag technology in area that, that will be ag into perpetuity? So I, I see the synergy too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner, oh. Yep?
Madam Chair, I'm the, this is Dave Pepcorn, I'm on the phone. So whoever's next, if you could fit me in the schedule, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yes. I, I suppose when you're on the phone, you can't raise your hand on the teams. I will, you, you are number four in the lineup. Commissioner Campbell, you are next, and then Commissioner Steen and then Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, again, I might be, maybe I've misunderstood the beginning of this presentation because I, I was under the understanding that this was, this, this request was about more than one individual parcel of, of ag land in our project. Maybe I misunderstood that. I would think that, you know, as Mayor Mahoney said, if we're talking about one individual parcel wanting to have a special use, that maybe that request could go through the Land Management Committee. Or for example, for example, if it was, if it was a similar type of deal on the Minnesota side, that that request would go through the MCC JPA for consideration and recommendation to the board. You know, and, and again, I think that might be in a, more of an appropriate way to handle this until we do come up with a final plan. As again, I'm going to repeat what Commissioner Sherrling said, that we're working on a final plan as to establish what is the process for these lands. I'll leave it with that, but I, I still think that if it's, if it's an individual request on one parcel, that, that maybe we should allow the Lands Committee to review that and, and give a recommendation moving forward.
And Commissioner Campbell, that, that committee meets next Thursday, correct?
I believe so. What's the third or fourth Wednesday of the month?
Maybe next Wednesday.
It'll be the 24th of February.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, in a week and a half. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Steen, Mr. Nicholson and then Commissioner Pepcorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my comments follow pretty much along the line with Commissioner Campbell's. I mean, we're talking a one-year lease. As I understand it, for a parcel of land, I think the Lands Committee through their agent that you're using basically handles those currently, the one-year leases, if I'm not mistaken. And the other thing I'd be really concerned about, this item was placed on the agenda as a presentation. Was it placed on the agenda as an action item? And if it's not, because I don't have anything to suggest action on me, I don't have any information as a presentation. And so because it's a special meeting, I'd be hesitant to take any action during a special meeting if it wasn't presented as such. But I, again, I don't think that there's any issues with the Lands Committee handling this through the regular lease process.
You're correct, Commissioner Steen, it is on the agenda as a presentation only.
Thank you.
Mr. Nicholson and then Commissioner Pepcorn.
Chair and members of the board, I make these comments as my role in serving you as the interim Deputy Executive Director and also having the coveted role of helping finalize the land policy. I just want to raise a question with respect to the piece of land that Mayor Mahoney mentioned. He did mention that Ames Contracting and that it was a part of the planned construction for the Wild Rice Control Structure. I believe it's true that that land is under the control of Ames and the Corps. And I'm not sure that Pifer and the Board have the authority under the contract that Ames has with the Corps to rent that land out outside of Ames's approval. So just something to consider as you're thinking about that particular parcel. It may be that the Grand Farm can go directly to Ames and, you know, secure that property by themselves. And John or Eric or someone can correct me if that position is incorrect.
Any comments in response to Mr. Nicholson's question?
Hi, Mayor Carlson, this is Eric Dodds. I would agree with Martin's comments. And if you don't mind, I'll share my screen here for a minute. Just pull up a map application to show the group what we're talking about. Sorry to those that are on the phone. But the Wild Rice Control Structure is being constructed, as you're all well aware, just south of the St. Benedict's area. The parcels immediately west of where the structure is being constructed, outlined on the map here in the shaded area, were not farmed last year. They are in the sort of care, custody and control of Ames, who is under contract to the Corps of Engineers. And so that's, I think, one of the areas that we're talking about. And as Martin noted, this area is within the control of Ames Construction. They've given some preliminary indication that they're not planning to do any construction activity there this year again. And so I think the Grand Farm may have an opportunity to work directly with Ames. And apologize for some of the confusion on all this, but that, that may be an opportunity, again, just for awareness sake, to make everybody happy because as the diversion authority and the Joint Board and all the farm-minded folks are well aware, we don't, we certainly don't want another weed patch out in this area this summer. And so something needs to be done. And if Ames would entertain working with the Grand Farm perhaps, that's a good solution for all of us.
Thank you for helping to clarify that, Mr. Dodds. Commissioner Pepcorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my main thing is, I heard them say that they requested this in August. And here we are in February and obviously with, with a growing season, you need to know as soon as possible. So my question is, how come it's taken this long for, for it to get to the diversion authority? I, I fully support having a policy to follow, but it seems to me like we're moving kind of slowly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pepcorn. Director Paulson, would, would you be able to respond to that?
Yes, absolutely. So yes, it has taken some time, Commissioner Pepcorn. You know, obviously, there's a, a, a lot of issues related with the lands program and a lot of nuanced specifics related to the land. It took us quite some time to even identify some parcels that would be conducive to a lease arrangement and that would also fit within the, the, the goals of the Grand Farm as well. This, this particular parcel that Eric just showed you is one that had some uncertainty around it. It, you know, became a bit more certain as Ames' construction schedule became more transparent to us. And so it has taken some time to develop. And then, you know, this, it, it, it has been kind of unconventional for an unsolicited proposal for our land. We haven't dealt with that before. Really spurred some of the discussions about the need for a lands policy and, and how we deal with special circumstances in order to, you know, find resolution and, and move forward. And so, you know, the lands policy has been discussed now for, you know, I think a, a couple of months. I do believe it's, it's becoming very developed. We've got, you know, some great discussion that can be had at the next committee concerning how we manage our asset lands property and potentially how we also dispose of our asset lands policies. So, you know, I, I guess I'd wish to just convey, it's, it's been a very complicated set of variables that we've had to deal with politically, you know, sensitive to neighboring landowners and, and landowners that have been impacted by the project as well. All the while, you know, continuing to work with some of these individual producers with flow adjustments, insurance products that came out of the settlement agreement. You know, I think we're getting to a point where those things are all clarified now as we move into the future. So there's a lot more certainty now than there's ever been on both when and, and how things are going to be implemented and, and managed on behalf of the diversion authority. Obviously, as your executive director, you know, I, I, you know, this is more of a policy-related issue and, and how we deal with it. And so, you know, I really didn't have the ability to do much else other than to spur the conversation and, and allow the, the Lands Committee folks to consider what, what an asset policy may look like. And so that has been developing over time. Certainly take any questions if you, if you have some.
Thank you, Director Paulson. Mr. Steen, your hand is raised, so Commissioner.
I did raise it back up. So clarify for me, Joel or Eric or somebody or Martin, is this land under our control or under the control of Ames? It really would shorten this discussion quite a bit.
I, I would refer to Deputy Executive Nicholson. I believe he may have talked to the Board recently about how that is being viewed or where the responsibilities are.
Executive Director Paulson, Chairman Carlson and others, I have not spoken to the Corps recently about this, but it's my understanding that this is part of the site that the Wild Rice Contract grants to Ames. And so I think without Ames' consent, a, you know, you could not lease this out without their consent, given that they have access to that site. So, you know, Pifer, Pifers may or may not be involved, but it would need to be driven through Ames as a contract.
So this is a good discussion and the direction leads elsewhere. Leads to Ames right now, if anyone wants to, if something wants to happen, it goes through Ames at this point.
Commissioner Steen, it certainly sounds like that is likely the answer. Mr. Olson, I, I know that your hand is raised. I do just want to make a comment, though, that, you know, although we do recognize your timelines, Mr. Tavene, it seems to be like, it seems to be that this is a, a pretty big issue to know who actually controls the lease on this land. Additionally, I'm hearing from many of the, the Board members that this is likely something that should probably go to our Lands Committee to at least weigh in and, and they can have a more thorough discussion on this. And that is only a little over a week and, and a half away. It just seems that to continue a conversation about if land that we may or may not even have the ability, also given the fact this is on our agenda as a presentation, not something that we would be. if land that we may or may not even have the ability, also given the fact this is on our agenda as a presentation, not something that we would be making a motion on or anything like that. I am just curious if we want to continue this conversation or maybe end the conversation and at least get the questions answered as to who controls the land. And then, once that is determined, if it is a diversion authority, then it goes to the lands. I believe, Mr. Olson, did you take you took your hand down? But it is back up again. So.
Just a quick comment. Just a quick comment on my comments earlier. If this if this ground's already, if we've already lost ownership of this land and it's gone to the contractor, you know, my comments don't even apply to this piece of ground. Because it wasn't farmed last by a by another tenant. It wasn't owned by another person that was farming it. This is basically this piece of ground is outside of even the the land policy that we're developing. We hadn't even thought of adding something like this to it. So I feel comfortable letting the land committee or I suppose that's the best place. Or talk to Ames. I think there has to be clarification there. And if it's Ames, then the Grand Farm goes there and and makes the deal. I guess I do feel comfortable with that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Matthew Stamnis, your hand was up.
No, it should still be there. Thank you, Madam Fisher. Just to give some background who I am, my name is Matthew Stamnis. I work for the Cass County Out Department. And I'm involved with the FM diversion project. And just to reiterate what's going on in that piece of property, it it is under the control of Ames. There has, and if there's any discussions, have to go to Ames. They have to go through the Corps first to make sure that they understand what's going on and what could possibly happen at least in that location. There has been discussions with a Mark Hyatt, who's a farm right next to that location, about renting that property come 2021, actually, just this summer as well as after. There's been discussions about issues with overlapping of projects that happened in that area also. So there has been discussions of renting that land to a person already, person already farming in that area, right next to it, actually, as well as an understanding of who owns it.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Stamnis. Miss Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just I have a quick question. Why wasn't this figured out in August? If who owns the property? Is it? And I think you might have gone over it, but it just bewilders me why you, why didn't, did somebody not figure out that Ames owned it or controlled it? I'm just wondering.
No, it's it's sorry, Madam Fisher, if it's all right for me to respond. It's Matthew again.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Everybody understood whose it was, but due to issues that have come up from another portion of the project or the Wild Rice Structure, we're trying to figure out what could possibly be rented out because of the phasing of the construction itself. Because the way the Red River structure, the Red River construction would happen, there might be a chance that it might sever a north portion of the land or affect it in a way that agreeing to lease in an area may just might not be able to happen due to the complications from the current project that's out at the Wild Rice Structure. So it's more of the contractor getting a confirmation of what they're, what they are going to do and what they aren't going to do on the timeframe they're doing. And we had not been able to find that out till later, right around this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any more hands up. Mr. Strand, as soon as I said that, then Commissioner Strand's hand went up. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I I think this has really stimulated a really valuable conversation. And I thank Mr. Tavine and and his group for bringing this forward and for their interest in 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 this and for spurring our our discussion. I think bottom line, though, we have to have a policy that drives our action period for the long haul and for moment present. Wouldn't be proper to act absent a policy. I I think, though, it's important to know, to clarify, we really are excited about this new technology and any potential partnerships. But first and foremost, as Mr. Commissioner Olson said, we really have to honor our relationships with the farmers who we are, who are sacrificing their their lands and working with us and sometimes willingly or unwilling, you know, grudgingly. But we, that first is those relationships with the farmers and their families who are here first and who've been here. We, of course, have to make that a high priority and we can't be disrupting that. As long as it's fair market rates, they, I'm assuming our policies down the road will accommodate those considerations and new technologies that come in to to fill the gaps.
Thank you, Commissioner Strand. I I could not have said that any better myself. Greg, I'm assuming that is you, Mr. Tavine, have your, you have your hand up. And I believe I think I heard Mr. Pepcorn.
Sure, Madam Chair, I'm happy to part ways to Commissioner Pepcorn. I was just going to thank the group. So if he has something, I would I would defer to him and then request the chance to just say thank you as we finish the conversation.
Yes. Mr. Pepcorn was that, or Commissioner Pepcorn, was that you who? I thought I heard your voice.
No, I apologize. It wasn't me.
Okay.
I felt complimented that you think I sound like Dave because he used to play for the Cleveland Browns, but this is Mahoney.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor Mahoney.
I think we're easy to resolve the problem. The Grand Farm should pursue Ames Construction and the Corps to see if they can rent it to release it from them. They would follow their protocols and rules. Actually, the DA really has no voice in this since we don't own the land. And I think if they went to the lands committee next week, that wouldn't really be beneficial because we don't have a policy yet. So it would suggest that they possibly wait till the the policies are made before they request anything. They could have a solution to their problem by working on a deal with Ames. So they'd be able to use the land. And then it'd be the foreign, the further relationship they might have with the DA will be codified by a policy and then they would apply accordingly to those rules, I would assume. So on time, time benefits, since we can't do any action item, this, I would say that thank you, Greg Tavine and your team for presenting this to us. And I believe there's no action that the 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 board needs to make at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Yes, you are correct. Mr. Tavine, I will turn it back over to you and then I will bring the meeting back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, just Greg from the Grand Farm, just want to say thanks, everybody, for being part of the process. We've had a great opportunity to get to know both Joel and several members of the committee better through this process. It it appears that when the diversion has clear policy, we look forward to hearing about that. So when that becomes a part of your process, we look forward to that. Until then, we will continue to pursue the options that have been mentioned today. And just as a citizen, thank you. Like, all of you volunteer your times. This is a gritty project. This is a big project. And I would just continue to encourage you to think about how technology can be part of the solution of your project, how the collaboration with community partners can help increase efficiencies. And we we appreciate the space on the agenda. We apologize that we may have structurally not presented our request appropriately. But again, we'll look forward to the policy and we just say thank you for your time and your service to our region.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tavine. I think it is an exciting project. And I think that this conversation really generated some good outcomes because, number one, we found out who actually controls that land, which is going to be beneficial to you. And number two, it really kind of underscored the the need for us to have an asset land policy, which I know is in the works, but hopefully that can get wrapped up sooner than later. Moving on to number six, our next meeting is scheduled for February 25, 2021. Personally, I think perhaps we should have something on the agenda where we celebrate our our permit that we received from the DNR. So congratulations to all who worked on that so hard for the last several years, which is much much farther back than than even me being on the diversion board. So I cannot take any of that credit. But all of you certainly can. So congratulations to you all. Number seven, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Peterson motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Steen.
Okay. Thank you all. And we will, I don't believe I need to take a roll call. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, we are adjourned and we will see you on February 25, everyone. Stay warm.